Informed consent by citizens, even if you are against whatever they're saying, but also just mainly citizens' consent. Some of the keys to success that they talked about was the budget, having a lead person, have steering committees, involve the city staff, involve retirees, school kids, and mix in the old with the new. In other words, just deal with different generations of people with different ideas. So that seemed to, so you're training them to become leaders like yourselves. So get them more involved. So that was a really big thing for us, the key to success. Also, one of the major, and we have that video, Brett Legs, who is LEGG, who is the Director of the African American Cultural Heritage Action Fund, had an excellent video on how they improved African American homes, schools, libraries, and the National Mary Potter Club got a shout out. So I didn't attend that particular Downtown Two workshop, but Christie Brantley, who's the CLG Coordinator for the State Historic Preservation Office, highlighted the amount of money that the National Mary Potter Club has received for the rehabilitation of the shop. So that was, I wasn't in there, but they found me and told me all about that. So that was exciting. And they also talked about creating a third space. Let me know when my time is up. It was very exciting. We learned quite a bit. And they also mentioned that we should tell our story. Everyone in here has a story. When I, when the National Mary Potter Club had our public meeting, everyone there got up and told their story, which was exciting. And that came from me attending this workshop, is that we need to be in charge of our own story. Tell your story, record your story, so that the community can bond around your story and let the young people know what you have done and what, just who you are. And it's also, is that beep for me? Okay, alrighty.
It'd be like the legislature, I yield a minute of my.
And the last thing which I will, is about creating what they call a third space. They said we should add spaces in downtown to sit and to lounge, an area for kids, add an experience like karaoke games or make something like noise makers for the children and for seniors, and have a variety of lighting, have different types of workspaces, high tables and low tables, fireplaces and outside heaters, lounge seating, sound acoustic artwork, wall mirrors. But it was a very, if you ever get a chance, attend that, the Main Street Conference. So we're ready for our master plan. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Ms. Green.
Hi, good evening, everyone. And I am so happy to follow Rosalind Green because I'm here on behalf of the DOEDC Board as well, but the Rosalind Green Fan Club is my other job. I am Lori Downtown Dutra, and I am here to give, spend just a moment with you and as well bring you up to date on the Main Street Conference in states we went to this year. I've been to about the last four. We were back out of virtual existence into, in person, and that was wonderful. And I was able with Mayor Sargent and your Downtown Director Alyssa Blair and Ms. Green and I, we were all there at the conference. I think Rosalind spent the entire time there, and I almost made it early enough to get to the entire conference. But it was really neat because there were more than 700 other local representatives there, Board of Commissioners representatives, economic development, all sorts of folks. Really was neat when we were in the session, one of the main sessions, we got to stand up for Oxford to be recognized because we are a 25-year member of NC Main Street this year. And Rosalind and I were so proud to stand up and cheer. And I know that you know that in the past couple of years, several years, we've had downtown projects here be recognized and awarded. And we are on a roll with that. This year, Oxford did not have any, but we are definitely been recognized and we're on track to win additional recognition with more reuse and more downtown stuff that's just happened. And it's not all about the buildings. I'm glad Rosalind went through some of the things that were there because it was fascinating, the topics this year. But this year is the year of the trail. I'm just going to let you all pass the brochure around because if you're interested in any of these, I'll tell you in a minute how you can go download them and watch them. This year's conference was about trails, recognizing the impact that integrating, developing walkable spaces, both in downtown and for access for all neighborhoods to the downtown, the impact that can have on generating development dollars and also raising economic vitality of the neighborhoods. They talked about near downtown, downtown parks, like Mr. Duncan was talking about as well, lifting those up, connecting them, making them part of the whole system. You guys have done a lot to recognize Greenway importance, and you're still doing things for Greenway importance. And there are so many trail opportunities in Oxford. We have opportunities to have trail as the county seat history. We've been a past center and a current center of historic education downtown, civil rights, historic tobacco, and our connection in the city of Oxford to the exploration of the galaxies. I mean, we have Webb High School here, and we were here when they showed the first pictures. It was really, really awesome, and that is Oxford. So I'm inviting all of you this Friday at noon to come to the 25-year celebration. Alyssa's putting together, I know she's told you about it. Please come down, walk, I know you're downtown all the time and you run here and there. Walk around a little bit, meet some of the new folks in businesses downtown. And then you can go to the 2023 Main Street Conference. And I'll just put this at the board, but you can, you can download any of these sessions that Rosalind talked about. And I believe you can download, download Mr. Legs' presentation, which was awesome. It was just awesome. He was so good, so I highly recommend you look at that. And I'm just going to say this, for what the Downtown Economic Development Commission does, it's not all about the implementation of our downtown plan. It's about growing all of these other issues throughout the city and especially with new development coming in and wanting to make the residents happy and wanting to please the city. It's happening downtown, but we can't do it without you. The city has to be our partner. You have to be our partner for any money, grant money. We have to work together toward this. There's a lot of opportunity out there for this, and we think it looks like a bright future. So we're going to be back every now and then and keep you updated on stuff. And anytime a committee of the DOEDC is meeting, not so much the Board itself, come to a committee meeting, come to the Design Committee, come to the Promotions Committee, spend a little time, find out what's happening, maybe join a little Ubo Grease. And out of that, I think you've seen other little groups pop up, and I'm really excited to see Mr. Duncan's group, you know, so near, pop up because that's what it's going to take and it's going to work. So anyway, do go, take a look, and maybe next year, let's have seven commissioners at the conference. Next year, it's in Goldsboro. That's right, now Goldsboro's done a lot of really neat stuff, so.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dutra. Excellent from both of you. And lastly, I, well, before I move on, did anybody have any questions for either of them? Yes, sir.
So this question is, you know, I'll ask two speakers. I have heard of Mr. Legg. Does he, doesn't he provide some kind of funding with certain projects? I mean, he raises money, doesn't he?
Yes, he does. The African American Heritage and the National Trust for Historic Preservation has money, and I have received, the National Mary Potter Club has received grant money from him. And I can introduce myself to him, and he's aware of our project here in Oxford. So yes, there is money there, and I can send you his link in, yeah, but he's on it. And he has an awesome video that everyone can see. Yes, he has money, this organization.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, lastly, I would like to invite Sue Springer to come forward to the podium.
Sue Springer, 511 High Street. I wanted to address, first of all, the Public Safety Committee meeting. There were seven of you present at that meeting, as far as I remember. I think there were seven people. One of the things that was said about the problems in the police department, one of you said that you had no idea that any of this was going on, and you also had no idea that the computers were that old, and you were shocked that all of a sudden there was something wrong. And another one of you said that you never heard about the equipment needs, and then you turned around and blamed it on the head of the department and the employees. The chief pointed out that all the department heads and everybody agreed with her, there was a department head that was there, that they were all told to go directly to Alan Thornton and not to talk to you guys about it. And then, at the very end, Captain Curl said that she came to each one of you individually and sometimes with the chief, and even to the point of being in tears because she was so concerned for the safety of her officers. So when we have this kind of stuff that's hidden and then it takes this audit to bring this stuff out, it makes me say, maybe we should have an audit of all the other city departments to see what else is hidden under the rug. And the second thing I want to address is the incident that happened at Hicks Park. And Commissioner Khan, I believe you witnessed this.
I was there, yes, ma'am.
There were kids at Hicks Park. This is secondhand for me, so if there's anything that I say that's not correct, please correct me. Captain Curl was heading into the parking lot there, and she saw something that looked out of place. So she stopped the car and she got out, and she went over to the kids and said, hey, what's going on? And she ended up getting surrounded by this group of teenagers, and they were in her face swearing at her and just calling her all kinds of bad names. Now, this is a woman in uniform, carrying a gun and mace and a taser, and these kids are so brazen that they surrounded her. She ended up calling for backup. And we want to have a walkable city? Like, we need to do something about this. I don't know what it's going to take. I don't know if it's going to take cameras at the parks. I don't know what it's going to take. But I just keep thinking about me. I walk past that park all the time with my purse on my shoulder. I have no muscle strength. I'm, I'm an old lady. And I keep thinking, that's just a vulnerable thing, and all it would take would be one kid to say, there's our target. And, you know, we, we need to do something about this. Summer is coming, kids are going to be off of school, and we need to do something before this gets out of hand. We want a walkable city? I'm afraid, I walk past that park all the time. I'm now afraid to walk by myself past that park. I, I don't know what you're going to do, but we got to do something. Maybe we need cameras installed, maybe we need, like, citizen, people there to keep an eye on things. I don't know, but this is really dangerous. You agree?
Was that a question for me or you?
Yeah, you agree. You saw it.
I was, I was there, about 30 yards away. There was, there was a commotion to the extent of what took place, who and how it took place. I'll leave that to the police department, but certainly, you know.
This is not acceptable. It's not acceptable. We got to nip this in the bud before it gets out of hand.
Thank you very much, Ms. Springer. Now move forward. I would like to add one additional thing, which is that we don't dispute the concern and the distress and the concern for our officer, for Captain Curl, and, and the rest of our police department in their efforts to keep us all safe. So thank you very much. We now move forward to the public hearing portion of our agenda. And Item A is a public hearing to receive citizen input on the updated land use comprehensive plan. The Consultant Stewart Incorporated made a presentation at the March Board Meeting and updated the plan based on received feedback. Feedback so far included the following, that for cultural resources, we should mention the courthouse, which is the crown jewel of the downtown, and recognize the 59 plus or minus acres, which are recently designated as conservation as donated to the Tar River Land Conservancy. The process of updating the comprehensive plan started in May of 2022. The process included stakeholder interviews in June, public workshop in July, community surveys July through October, and an open house in December. Repeat that the vision of the city of Oxford is, for the comprehensive plan, is a vibrant community of engaged citizens, thriving businesses, and beautiful public spaces where established residents, newcomers, and visitors all belong. With that, I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in this section to my right that would like to come forward to speak on this issue?
Larry Thomas, 207 East Front Street, Oxford. My brand's a huge plan. I'd like to see the Board refine and prioritize the rather vague action items in the report and instruct staff to proceed with accomplishing the task that the Board identifies. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. I'm going to take a moment and write that note. Would anyone else in this section to my right like to come forward to speak on this issue? Would anyone in the center section like to come forward to speak on this issue?
Good evening, Board. Lori Dutra, 101 Tranquil Drive, Oxford. Just want to say that a lot of hard work went into your plan, your planning board, the folks who came to committee meetings, the, the public meeting we had in December. There was a lot of work on it. I do urge your adoption of it. I'm the person who made the comment about the courthouse because our plan does not mention our courthouse, and our plan needs to mention our courthouse because, of course, it is the reason Oxford here has the county seat. I simply asked that it go into the cultural section, and I think there's a history section as well, that will just say, the courthouse built in 1837, I believe, still stands or whatever, or something that will recognize that as part of the plan. And as you all know, every development decision you've made, and you've made a bunch, you must find it's consistent with your plan. So it's great that you've updated it. It's good that it's a living document. I know the discussion that Mr. Thomas brought out of some specificity in action was discussed quite a bit at the planning board, and it is a document that lets you take those actions. And I don't think that's a bad idea, but as your policy, as your vision for the future, it's great that it's updated. I think it'll be a good guide for where development comes. It'll give you the ability to both say, yes, it's time, and to maybe say, no, it's not time. That's what a plan's for. So thanks and adopt it, please.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dutra. Is there anyone else in the center section that would like to come forward to speak on this? Is there anyone in this section to our left that would like to come forward to speak on this item? Last call, regardless of geography. Would anyone like to come forward to speak? Okay, with that, I declare the public hearing closed. And we move forward to considering adopting the updated land use comprehensive plan. And you also have before you, everybody received their copies of the plan in a previous meeting, and you have an updated version of the map that was sent with your agenda packet and has also been posted downstairs, which showed in addition, an additional change of adding a highway, a mixed-use corridor along Lewis Street coming down from Industry Drive through the PUD and down to the residential area. So that was the change to the map. And what is the, the recommendation, of course, is that we adopt the updated land use comprehensive plan. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioners Gilreath and with a bullet or, okay, bullet concomitantly. Any discussion on the motion?
I just have a question with regards to both the comments we heard this evening in terms of incorporating those elements into this plan. Generally speaking, how do we approach that? Because this is the foundation of our plan going forward, our guidance. So getting more comprehensive details on specific pieces, as Mr. Thomas was mentioning, and certainly the courthouse, as Ms. Dutra mentioned, how would those, how would those be taken into account?
Yes, Ms. Hart.
So, well, Ms. Dutra, we had mentioned, we've always limited it to the consultants, so we will get that land used included in there. And regards to Mr. Thomas's comments, as we intend to somehow plan the Board meeting, we talked about affordability of houses. Some of those items, we would need to kind of have committees and work on it, which we encourage that. But in terms of the comp plan itself, it is necessary for us to have that in place. So some of those comments that Mr. Thomas worked on real hard for us and we'll work those things out.
So it's my understanding then that we could, from this, be able to create committees, to be able to address those, those type of concerns, affordable, obtainable housing, things of that nature, so we could use this as a springboard to move into those things. Okay?
And if there were a need, I mean, if there were a need or a desire on behalf of the Board to further prioritize or add detail or specificity, of course, that would be an option to do an amendment. Would you?
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. Other questions? And I just have one, with respect to the 59 plus or minus acres that were designated as conservation, donated to Tar River Land Conservancy. Where, where are those located?
That was probably that was on the, um, spread of the tabloids, and it's adjacent to Patrick Creek.
That's right, in the back of the PUD.
That's right. And so we just wanted to, you know, get that. And of course, we thank Ms. Dutra for bringing that to our attention and following up. I do want this to be on, on the, um, committee members that work so hard for the Asher and the Scott.
Well, the committee thanks you for your leadership, as well as the work and the consultants with Stewart. So if there are no other questions, all in favor of the motion to adopt the plan as it stands at this moment, with the updated map and addition of the courthouse and the conservation land, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Hart, for your work on that. We move forward to Item C, which is a public hearing to receive citizen input on a request by SS Long Holdings LLC to rezone 322 Lewis Street from light industrial to highway business. The requested rezoning would be consistent with the current comprehensive land use plan and the proposed comprehensive land use plan. The property was rezoned from highway business to general industrial at the June 12, 2018 meeting. The new owner would like to revert back to the previous zoning classification. Acceptable uses for this area would include arts, entertainment, food services, educational services, retail, and so on. And you have a staff report included in Attachment 5A. The staff recommends approving the rezoning request. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Khan. Any discussion there, too? Yes, Ms. Hart?
So I will ask for permission with all of the people, please, and please, in motion that the consistency statement is included.
So I'll amend my motion to make sure we included that consistency statement.
That the current rezoning is consistent with both the current and the just adopted land use plans?
Correct.
Is that the language?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
It's just public hearing.
You know, you're absolutely right. I'm, I'm so sorry. Absolutely. That's because I switched down to read the narrative for the purposes of the public hearing, and then I just kept going. Please forgive me. With that, I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to my section, the section to our right, that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone in the center section that would like to come forward to speak on this issue?
Good evening, Mayor, Board members. I'll be brief, I know you guys have a long agenda.
Name?
I'm Jerry Koinas, and address 111 Gilliam Street, Oxford, North Carolina. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, SS Long Holdings, seeking to rezone. Property located as 322 Lewis Street in Oxford. As was noted in the staff report, this property was previously rezoned in 2018. At that time, from highway business to general industrial. The general industrial classification later became to be known for what it currently is owned as, as light industrial. At this time, just requesting to go back from light industrial back to highway business. My understanding that is consistent with what the comprehensive land use plan was as of right now, as well as, you know, five minutes ago before you guys just adopted the amended one. So it was consistent both ways. The proposed rezoning will be consistent with adjacent properties. Certainly be happy to answer any questions. As Ms. Hart noted, would certainly, if in favor of the Board, if the Board was inclined to grant the rezoning, certainly would have just requested that consistency statement be included as part of any motion or as part of a separate motion. If you have, have to answer any questions, may have. Also, I'll just note the applicant is here, the builder is here, if there are any questions. But with this being a rezoning, obviously, no, it's not project specific. It's anything that could go in that zoning classification.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I was just curious as to why the request to go back to the zoning that they came from.
Yeah, a couple, one, easiest answer, different, different owners. The property was recently sold, so these are new owners. There was a, I think Q Reynolds LLC was the owner at the time when it was done in 2018. SS Long Holdings, different owners. That's the main reason. But for the use that they're looking, I guess they're looking for something that would be permitted within that zoning classification. So if you're asking, so that what they're looking to do, wouldn't be something that would be within light industrial, so highway businesses, their proposed classification.
Excellent. Other questions for Attorney Koinas? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Would anyone else in this section like to come forward? Would anyone from the center, the section to our left like to come forward to speak on this item? Last call. Anyone from anywhere? Okay, with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Again, I apologize for trying to skip past that. We move forward. We did have a motion from Commissioner Khan. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of adopting the, approving the rezoning request with the language that it is consistent with the former and now current land use plans, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And thank you very much, Mr. Carroll. We move forward to Item 5, City Business. And we, Item A there, consider awarding the fiscal year 2022-23 audit contract to S. Preston Douglas and Associates, LLP, to audit the city's financial statements from July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $35,500. The local government commission requires that the audit contract to the city contains the date of the governing board's approval of the contract. Accordingly, the firm of S. Preston Douglas and Associates, LLP, has submitted a contract to audit the accounts of the city of Oxford and prepare the comprehensive annual financial statement for a fee not to exceed $35,500. and prepare the comprehensive annual financial statement for a fee not to exceed thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. And you have support information in that contract in attachment five A. The recommended action is to approve the audit contact with S. Preston Douglas and Associates to audit the city's financial statements and authorize interim city manager and myself to sign the contract. And I would add that this contract is for the same amount as they charged the city in the last fiscal year. So it represents no increase. And I believe I heard Commissioner Bridges already say there was a motion?
Well, yeah, I'm, I was, I don't have a problem making, making the motion. But, you know, on my document, it says attachment five B.
It's five A, it's five A.
Okay, all right. I just. Okay. Okay, all right, all right, okay, okay, all right. So I will make a motion, uh, Mayor, but I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, well, um, I was just wondering why it says not to exceed thirty-five thousand. I mean, is it, is there a possibility of a lower amount?
That they're, they, they're charging on an hourly basis.
Okay.
That's, uh, and so it, it, if, if it takes less time on an hourly basis, we won't, we won't hit the thirty-five fives. But it's, but they're putting a cap on it at thirty-five five. Because, because they do charge us on the hourly rate that the accountant, while they're here or while they're in their office working.
Okay, no, I just wanted to try to understand that language.
Absolutely, and, you know, hopefully, that last year was their first year working with the city. And, um, so it probably took them a little longer and maybe this year it might be a little bit smoother for them. And, uh, so is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving the audit contract in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars with S. Preston Douglas and Associates? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? And that motion carries unanimously. And I would just like to, um, ask you all. Uh, one of the reasons that we switched this, this contract last year was actually approved in July because Winston William Creach and Evans found themselves under the gun and unable to handle, uh, the workload. And, um, Jim Winston recently passed. He had been in charge of, like, the co-founder of that company and, um, an auditor for the city for probably at least twenty years, if not longer. So I would just ask everybody to please keep him, his family, in your thoughts and prayers, since I'm sure this is a very difficult time for them. We move forward to item B. Consider calling for a public hearing for the May ninth regular board meeting to receive citizen input on the updated plans for the seven and a quarter commercial, acre, commercial component of Hatchet Creek planned unit development. The developers are proposing thirty-two thousand, one hundred square feet of commercial and office real estate, seventeen thousand, two hundred square feet of general commercial and retail, ten thousand, nine hundred square feet of restaurant space, and four thousand square feet of office space. The changes proposed will need approval as a modification to the previously approved plan for seven and a quarter acres. And you have a staff report in attachment five C. The recommendation, of course, is that we call for a public hearing on May ninth, twenty twenty-three. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Khan. Any discussion? I just have a question. Uh, at that time, with the next agenda, would we be getting a site plan, uh, for the new design to compare with it along with the original design, Ms. Hart?
I'll try to make it to the, um, obviously, the other two.
And it's just not till the next meeting, but thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. We have a request for item, Grahamville County, for item C. Enclosed, the board will find a request letter from the Grahamville County Chair of the Board of Commissioners and its county manager as they are asking that Veterans Affairs Committee be exempt from fees to participate in the city of Oxford sponsored events. Please note that this committee, because of its office located in the downtown area, is already exempt from a city fee if it opens a booth in front of this location for downtown events. And you have, uh, the letter is in attachment five D. There is no staff recommendation. This is at the board's discretion. But I would like to hand this off to Commissioner Bullock because at the board's request, after the agenda meeting, he did go out and gather further information.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we did gather. I did meet with interim city manager Stephen Harrell, Ms. Blair, and, sorry, the name.
Eliza.
Lydia. We did meet and discuss. Uh, we are suggesting a couple minor changes to what is being asked. Number one, um, one of the concerns I had was that here we had one group of veterans getting the benefit, and there were a couple other veteran groups that would have to pay. So we've agreed that, uh, all three would be free to participate in the Oxford Christmas Parade, as well as, um, Hot Sauce Festival. And, uh, those two other groups have been made aware of it. Now it's just up to them, should they decide to pursue it. The other thing was that as opposed to an open-ended request, this is for this year only. So rather than prove something's gonna happen twenty years down the road or whatever. And there was also some discussion about looking to see how we could handle this better in the future. So rather than just give a blanket statement, we would suggest that this be for this year only and that those three groups this year be able to participate, but don't charge. And I ask if there are any other.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you make those suggestions in the form of a motion?
I do.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bullock to approve the request for all veteran groups in Grahamville County to include hot sauce and the Christmas parade and that it be for the twenty twenty-three year alone. Is that correct? Is there any discussion?
Just have one question. Does that, are you implying though that they have to work together and have a booth in proximity to each other or they can have their own?
If they want to have a space by themselves, they just have to turn in a request.
Okay, all right.
And we talked about post ninety, American Legion, the, uh, post one sixty-six ladies auxiliary, as well as the, uh, uh,
Veterans Affairs.
Veterans Affairs Committee.
What's the auxiliary's number?
One sixty-six. Okay, and I failed to thank you for your work, uh, along with everybody else that was Ms. Blair and, uh, Ms. Perry and everybody. Thank you very much for doing additional investigation and discussion. Is there further discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So you said it's three, right?
Yeah.
And then in the motion, like, I guess, the way you phrase it, you said all, is that, is three all of them?
Yes.
Or should we be more specific about?
There's three identified as in five oh one three C, all of that, units that are veterans of focus. American Legion, ladies auxiliary, and the, uh.
Yeah, I was just worried about like the all veterans groups. I guess it's kind of vague on this.
So you would prefer it if we further just specify, we're talking about the county Veterans Affairs Committee, American Legion Post ninety, and American Legion Post one sixty-six.
Correct. It's post one sixty-six, ladies auxiliary.
Ladies auxiliary, thank you. You're, you.
I think, yeah, I think, I think that would be better to specific, be specific with it.
With the name.
If everybody else is okay with that.
Okay.
Say that again.
That he's just suggesting that, uh, rather than do a general, all veterans organizations, in case there are pop-ups, I guess, that what we currently have in the county right now is the county Veterans Affairs Committee who generated the request. And we have American Legion Post ninety, which is the one across from Hilltop. And then we have, uh, post one sixty-six, which is the ladies auxiliary. That those three be granted, uh, and have their fees waived for the hot sauce contest, as well as the Christmas parade.
Mayor, just for clarification, post one sixty-six was an American Legion post.
Right.
But unfortunately, it died out with lack of participation. Charter was removed. But an auxiliary can be formed in association with a post. Once it's credentialed, it is a totally separate item. So even though post one sixty-six no longer exists, they can continue as a viable function.
And they are still active and they do their poppy days and they do a number of activities that they've reached out to us on a number of occasions. Thank you, sir. Further questions down this end? Anything else? All in favor of the motion, which limits it to twenty twenty-three only? Includes the three named organizations, veteran organizations that we discussed for hot sauce and the Christmas parade. Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Item D, consider allowing the city of Oxford to submit an updated cost share letter for the clean fuel advanced technology CFAT grant, which was submitted in twenty twenty-two. The city of Oxford has made it through to the second round of the twenty twenty-two CFAT grant cycle. It has been requested by the grant administrator that in order to enhance our application's competitiveness, that we should apply for two dual port charging stations for downtown Oxford. The city submitted the twenty twenty-two CFAT grant application to help in procuring electric vehicle charging stations in downtown Oxford, specifically on Little John Street. The Oxford Board of Commissioners approved the city of Oxford pursuing the CFAT grant in twenty twenty before the COVID nineteen pandemic shut the program down. John Bonnet, the grant administration with the North, administrator with the North Carolina Clean Energy Technology Center, contacted the city of Oxford to inform the applicant's progression to the second round. However, he stressed the importance of Oxford adding an additional dual port station in order to remain competitive in the application process. The previous adjusted letter submitted in November twenty twenty-two had the cost share at fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. With the recommended upgrades, including Duke energy rates, the new cost share amount is twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, with the overall budget for the grant project totaling approximately one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and four thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. The CFAT award covers eighty percent of the cost, totaling eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. You have support information, uh, including a number of details on the grant in attachment five E. Ha. Is it? Indeed, correct. Five D. The recommended action is that staff accept the updated cost share letter for the continuance through a clean fuel advanced technology grant cycle. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? All in favor of our moving forward, uh, in the technology world, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
And clean energy, all opposed? Like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Blair, for your work on that, and Mr. Harrell. Item E, amendment to the ARPA grant project ordinance. As you know, Oxford has received two million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars in ARP funds. Attached is a school of government blog on the ARP standard allowance, which allows for a local government unit that receives less than ten million in ARP funding to use the funding as revenue replacement. The authority to expend ARP funds in the revenue replacement category is very broad. It encompasses almost anything the local government has state law authority to undertake, including general and enterprise fund expenditures, operating and capital expenditures, administrative costs, salaries and benefits, and other internal costs and external contracts for projects and services. This allows the local government to reimburse itself as revenue replacement for eligible expenditures incurred in the period between March third, twenty twelve through December thirty-first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, not twenty-six?
Um, the, the, to do it with the replacement, it would be twenty twenty-four.
So it actually caps it, otherwise it would be twenty twenty-six? Because I thought that.
That's how I understood it. I can double check that, but that's how I understood it. That would not, that would not, that would not, that would not prevent you from doing this tonight, if, if indeed it's twenty-six. But my understanding of his revenue replacement, you have to have that by the, no later than twenty twenty-four.
Okay, um, the, the person who wrote the school of government, uh, item that you included in the agenda packet is gonna be at Vans Graham on Thursday, giving that class. Okay, I, I somehow missed that when I looked through earlier. Um, the use of ARP funding as replacement revenue essentially would free up Oxford's two million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars for use in other areas, allowing for local government to expend under state law. As noted in the attached blog, a local government must adopt a grant project ordinance before expending or obligating any of its ARP funding and elect to use its ARP funding as replacement revenue by April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The fact that the board adopted an ARPA grant project ordinance in August twenty twenty-one allows the board to amend this ordinance to use the ARP funds as replacement revenue. As it is right now, the project ordinance simply notes the receipt of the ARP funds as revenue and the use of the ARP as expenditures. You can do that amendment to the project ordinance as part of our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget preparation process with an amendment at the budgets, at the board's April eleventh meeting, which then frees the money for the board's consideration for use in projects for the coming budget year. The two million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars will be held in a separate bank account as it currently is, attached as the amended project ordinance, which is in attachment, I think it might be five E. It is, it's five E rather than F. And the recommended, there is no specific recommendation. This is at the board's discretion. So what is the board's inclination?
Motion that we move it to, uh, replacement, yeah, well, think about that for a second. I guess we'll, uh, I want a motion that we, uh, let me go ahead and move it and use it as replacement funds.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Khan. Is there any discussion? Okay, I would just say that it concerns me because we've been operating under the assumption that we had until twenty twenty-six, to expend the money, which I think the board was thinking would give us time to think about, you know, you mentioned, Commissioner Khan, um.
Ma- Mayor, I think that now that I've read what I wrote, is that it's eligible to replace expenditures that occurred from two thousand, from March third, two thousand and twelve through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So by putting it as replacement revenue in the, in the budget, you're saying that you are replacing monies that were spent between, that, that would have spent through twenty twenty-four, not ARPA monies. We're not talking about the ability to spend ARPA monies to twenty twenty-six. You're replacing money that we've already spent since March third, and you're allowed to do that through the twenty-four. But you're making, you're making the action tonight to just go ahead and put it in as replacement revenue for monies that have been spent since March the third.
Right, so, but then what that does is it prevents us from, so for example, what I was gonna say with Commissioner Khan discussed in the comprehensive plan, uh, priority to look at, um, affordable housing. Well, when I was at a mayor's meeting, one of the cities, and it might have been Goldsboro, I don't recall, they actually invested in land and then used that land as leverage to encourage a developer to, uh, to, to attract a developer that would build, um, you know, workforce and affordable housing on that land. So that would be something, for example, that the city of Oxford might not otherwise be able to think about doing that might be in line with, with goals and priorities that this board has already discussed. But if we don't make that decision before the end of next fiscal year, uh, before December of twenty twenty-four, we don't, that, we, we don't have that option of, so anything that we use these funds on has to be on money that the board has spent by.
No, ma'am.
No.
Twenty, by twenty twenty-four.
It is, it is an accounting principle. You've already spent since March third. You've already spent since March 3rd of 2012, I mean 2022, that should be 2021. Since March 3rd of 2021, you've spent way more than 2.8 million dollars. And all you're doing is taking the 2.8 and replacing those dollars. And, and then you have 2.8 million to spend on affordable housing or anything else you want. And you don't have to worry about any dates or times. You do it when you want to.
It, it removes the red tape and we're allowed, we can then use those funds without having to appropriate those funds.
Yeah.
Specific for any one given project. We're just taking possession of that money and then we can ultimately decide how we want to use it.
And, and I left it in a separate bank account and I left it, and it, and it reads in your budget, replacement revenue. So you know it's the ARPA money.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
Question on the dates here. Are we changing the period here for March 3rd, 2012?
No ma'am, it's 2021. That's, that's my, my fingers on the typewriter.
All right, okay.
Yes ma'am.
If we then, and I apologize that I didn't pick up the 2024. We've been so focused on this for 2026 that I just, I just didn't see it when I was reading it through. You, I completely understand the replacement revenue concept.
Yes ma'am.
However, once you do that, it would take board action to then restrict because the money just goes into, the money's in the general fund. It's no longer as a separate line item, that little kitty, that pot, that the board knows is available for those unusual transformative things that we might want to do with it.
It's, it would be in your general fund and it will be, it will read, it will be in a separate line item and it will read replacement revenue. So you know that that's ARPA money in your general fund.
Currently on our budget is, is set aside too. So how, how would it be set aside any differently?
Excuse me?
Currently in our budget is already set aside.
It's set, it-
So how would you note it differently?
It's, it's set aside currently under capital outlay projects and it's labeled ARPA. If you spend it on a capital outlay project and it's labeled ARPA, then you're going to have to go through all the restrictive reporting and things that are necessary under the ARPA policy that you adopted last April. If it's just replacement revenue, I would recommend that you still spend it on the same kinds of things that you want to spend ARPA money on. But there are no restrictions in terms of, of reporting. It, it just becomes part of the general fund. And it doesn't matter whether it's 2024 or 2026. You can, you can leave the money in there as long as you want to until you want to spend it.
So are you saying it will just be absorbed in there and, and it won't be set aside? Can, can we just have a different budget item there?
Yes ma'am, it'll be a separate budget item labeled replacement revenue. Yes ma'am. And it'll be in a separate bank account.
Exactly.
Yes, I'm good. Okay, all in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item F, the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation improvements project. Revised, revised resolution for tentative award of bid, revised capital project ordinance, revised budget amendment. Board adopted resolution for tentative award to the low bidder, Carolina Civil Works Incorporated of Durham, North Carolina. The project was a 5% contingency of $450,958.78, the total construction cost of $9,470,134.38 at the March 2023 board meeting. Due to a mathematical error, the incorrect amount was listed for use from the water fund balance, which carried through to the resolution and budget amendment. This is a correction to the previously approved items and we have support information in attachment 5F. Recommended action, staff recommends that the board use the water fund balance in the amount of $4,768,674 to cover the balance of the project not covered by the DWI low interest loan and do a revised budget amendment to use these funds. Staff also recommends the board adopt the second revised capital project ordinance for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. It is recommended that the money stay in the current funds until such time as they are needed in 12 to 18 months. And this will be addressed in the fiscal year 202324 budget. And I would like to also add a shout out to Maya Wilson and Amy Ratliff because we received notice today that we did a proposal for 2.145 million to Congressman Fushi's office for possible inclusion in the appropriations budget and we made the shortlist. It does not mean that it will get it all the way through. But there is the potential that we might get an additional money to help out with that shortfall. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion, I think that was Commissioner Bullock and Mayor Protem at the same time. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item G, consider approving the continuous annexation request on behalf of Susan Param Horton, John Horton Jr., Jr., and Kenneth Param for property containing 1.42 plus or minus acres located off Lewis Street. The annexation process was initiated at the July board meeting and also went through the process of having the property rezoned from industrial park to highway business for the proposed urgent care facility. Currently, the 1.42 plus or minus acres is separated from the city limits by the street and meets the requirement for contiguous annexation. The clerk certified the sufficiency of the request in August, but the final step of approving annexation wasn't completed. And you have support information in attachment 5G. Staff recommends the annexation of the 1.42 acre tract of land. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges and Mayor Protem concomitantly. Any discussion there too? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item H, call for a public hearing for a request from Commissioner Khan regarding regulations for mobile food vendors. Currently, the UDO allows temporary food trucks on private and public property for 90 days with no renewal within one month of the commencement, commencement of the previous use for form-based and non-residential districts. The planning board received food truck regulations from the following municipalities, Knightdale, Cary, Charlotte, Durham, and Mooresville. And you have support information in attachment 5H, which shows the changes to the proposed wording of the text. And the recommended action is that staff and the planning board recommend calling for a public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lumpkins. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item I, a water shortage response plan. Every five years, the city is responsible for submitting a water shortage response plan to the state of North Carolina. The city received, submitted, recently submitted a plan and Klaus Albertin, a water resource engineer from the state of North Carolina, has reviewed it and suggests passing it without modifications. The recommended action by staff is to, that the board approve the plan and direct a mayor to assign it. And you have that planning attachment 5I. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion? Yes ma'am.
I have one question regarding that. I thought it was, you know, nice to be able to read this document in, in the event that we have to deal with a water shortage type response. But as I was reading through it, I, I was more concerned about what happens when the stakeholders or the, or the, the partners have bad action and it interferes with everyone's water supply. Like maybe they're more interested in selling it or misdirecting or, you know, astronomical growth in their areas and, and causes them to have to need more water. How, how, where's, where's that part of all of this?
So I think we would, so you're talking about our partners in the water treatment plant with the city of Henderson and Warren County?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I missed quite that question, I'm sorry.
How, how, how are we addressing? I, I started off with saying this is a good document because it allows us, it gives us the framework in the event that bad things start happening.
Mr. Blasco was the one that put this staff report together from our state.
Oh, I apologize.
Yes.
Yeah, this addresses like if there's a drought or something like that, this is not address our purchasing water.
Right, but I was wondering, is there such a document for the parties?
I'm sure there is, but um-
There, there is action that can be taken. I think the closest we've come to a severe situation was, we got to the point of closely suggesting cutbacks of water usage, but I don't know that we've ever had a complete cutoff or anything like that.
But is it written someplace that-
It's in, in the Corlebleton Regional Water, the agreement we have.
The partnership agreement from-
We, we can bring, we can, we can bring that, pull that, pull that out and bring that to the board.
Yeah.
Just for your information.
Yeah, I was, I was curious because I was like, this is good. But my bigger concern would be the other extreme.
This is talked about, like I said, one time it got, the water supply was down low enough that there was almost a recommendation that we ask people not to water their loans and that kind of stuff to save water, water usage.
That was during the drought, I think in 2007, eight, something like that?
We never had to do that as a matter of fact, but it was getting close.
And it would be safe to assume that they are also have the same responsibility to have water shortage plants?
Yeah, oh yes, this is required by the state.
Yeah.
And we submitted the exact same plan in 2019. It has to be submitted every five years, but originally it was supposed to be submitted in 2018. So the state's ordering us to that, that's why we're submitting it this year.
Any, any further questions, Commissioner? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item J, federal lead-in copper rule. In February, Brandon Clankie from 120 Water presented to the board regarding the upcoming federal lead-in copper rule timelines. To meet these timelines, we must start determining where the lines are located using various methods, including visual inspection by residents or employees, work order records, and water line replacement project records. As a result, we are on a tight timeline and ask the board to sign a contract with 120 Water. You have support information in attachment add-on 5J. And the recommended action is, I think, it's not staff and the, it's just staff. Recommend signing with 120 Water and starting this process as soon as possible. Is Steph and the planning board?
Yeah.
Okay, Steph and the pla, the planning board recommended this? Sure.
No.
No, not from the planning board.
No, okay, I, I thought not. Okay, staff recommends signing with 120 Water and starting this process as soon as possible. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Khan. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And before we move on to the consent agenda, we have additional items. I will do first, it's labeled amendment to ARPA grant project ordinance. It actually should be amendment to the airport authority budget. The summary statement, the city of Oxford budgeted $28,750 in fiscal year 23. And as long as we, forever, or at least while we've been members for the Aeronautics Airport Authority, the airport has made a request that this be increased by $5,000 in fiscal year 23, but it was not budgeted. The airport is asking this, authority is asking the city to provide this additional $5,000. The recommendation is that we adopt a budget amendment for $5,000 for the Aeronautics Authority operating expenses. And on the reverse side of your add-on, you see that in the budget amendment voucher. What is the pleasure of the board?
My pleasure.
I think I heard a motion all the way down the line, actually, you know. I'll let you pick. All in favor of the motion?
Uh, hold on.
Excuse me, any discussion?
Well, I just want to make one point that under this budget amendment, it says downtown development salaries. I'm assuming that we're not giving, that's, that's a typo.
No, they're taking it as a decrease because it was-
It's lapsed money.
Okay, alright.
It's money, it's money that lapsed while the position was vacant.
So that's, so we're taking it from that line item then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good eye.
Alright.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
The, so just, I just want to clarify, so that, that 5,000 comes from prior, like the money that was not used prior to Alyssa taking the role?
Yes, yes, sir.
That's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the miss, the motion, signal so by saying aye. Any opposed like sign? The motion carries unanimously. Look, we've gotten through this, but this, this agenda.
A little bit more.
That's right.
One more.
Okay, hang on, yeah, let me find my sheet. Nope. Uh, right, I, I don't, I haven't, she, oh yeah, it's right here. Okay, yep. And this is from Steve Harrell, call for a public hearing to be held on the May 9th regular board meeting to hear citizen input on the fiscal year 202324 budget. Public hearing is required pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 15912B. Before adopting the budget ordinance, the board shall hold a public hearing at which time any person who wish to be heard on the budget may appear. And we have, and she says we have attachment 5A. Okay, it's, sorry, it says attachment. It's okay.
It's okay.
It's okay. Staff recommends calling for a public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion.
All, any discussion? Motion by, I think it was Commissioner Bridges and Mayor Protem. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? The motion carries unanimously. And before we move on to the-
You're not gonna do that, this just-
I think we can, let me, let's go ahead and do the, well, we, we can go ahead and do this.
What a night.
We're just, let's do the consent agenda and then we'll go through comments before we move to the closed session. So we have a consent agenda where we accept the March 23 finance report by our interim finance director, Melissa LeBarre, as well as approve the minutes for the March 6th agenda meeting and the March 4th regular meeting. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges and Mayor Protem. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And Mayor Protem pointed out that we do have a departmental report from Melissa LeBarre, our human resources director, with a staffing update to say that we have new hires Andre Oakley from the police, for the police department and William Thomas Robinson, also for the police department, returning to us. Lydia Perry as our part-time events coordinator for, with the DOE DC and Alyssa Blair, Zachary Workman from the, for the police department and Sabrina Richardson with our executive department as our new communications specialist. So we welcome, I think Sabrina is the only one in the room. Yes, I know, I know she is. I don't believe anybody else of our new hires is here with us tonight, so welcome. Ms. Richardson, we're delighted to have you and we hope you have a long and fruitful career with us. And I'm sure we'll be putting you to work quickly. We've had a lot of discussion about communications. And absolutely, we welcome everybody else and of course, we are all thrilled to have, especially- have, especially returning staff to the police department is very exciting. So, um, congratulations, chief. And, uh, Godspeed with that. And we have no retirees, but we have a resignation, uh, James McElroy, who was a meter reader in our public works department. Any questions or comments about any of that? Okay. Uh, we have reminders that, uh, April fourteenth is, was mentioned earlier by Lori Dutra. He has cheers to twenty-five years. Oxford's Main Street Celebration, twelve noon at the courthouse. Is that correct, Ms. Blair? Okay. April twenty-seventh is the first of the Alive After Five concerts hosted by the Granville County Chamber of Commerce downtown in Little John parking lot from six to eight P M. And April twenty-ninth, Oxford Arts and Wine Festival hosted by the Hub on Main and the Oxford Arts Council is, that's a Saturday, eleven A M. to three P M. downtown on Main Street. Is that correct?
Uh, the time should be, um, one P M. to five P M. and that's the time.
Oh, one to five? Okay. Excellent. Super. And are there any other items that we need to add to our calendar of reminders?
There was the arts and wine festivals with one to five.
Yes. Yes sir.
Tina sent out a, sent out an email today inviting staff and the board this Thursday at noon, Tina?
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty to one thirty.
For smores.
For smores at Hicks Gym.
Yes.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you very much. So that's
Thursday. Twelve thirty.
That's, that's the thirteenth, correct? Twelve thirty to one thirty, staff and board be there or be square. Thank you. Smores, wonderful. Anything else? Okay, then, Mr. Harold, is there anything else that you would like to add?
No ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Lumpkins?
Uh, no, not, um
Okay, Commissioner Bullock?
Nothing.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Nothing.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I'm gonna be square. No, uh, I have a special setting in Franklin County Court with a judge who is expecting me to be there, so that's the only reason I'm not gonna be able to attend. I love smores. But nothing else.
Okay. We'll try to save you one.
Oh.
Bring it to your office. Commissioner Gilreath?
Nothing.
Commissioner Khan?
Uh, yes ma'am. Just want to address and clarify, uh, based on, uh, something that I believe it was Ms. Sue Springer brought up earlier this evening, uh, during public comment. Again, I, I mentioned this last Monday, uh, acknowledging and thanking the police department, but I just want to reiterate that while I might have been in the general vicinity, I am not in, I am not a member of city staff. I am not a police officer. It is not my place to be in the middle of any police action that's going on. And therefore, there's been numerous, uh, calls for me to make a comment on it, but I'm not going to make a comment on it because it is not my place. I'm no different than anybody sitting on this side of the dais when we are not in session. So it is not my, uh, not my place to get in the middle of police business. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And I think all I have to add is, thank you to everybody that is here. Thank you to everybody on the staff. So many have been, so many departments have been short-staffed and you rise to the occasion. We are so happy we've got new folks at the police department, but you're, still have some openings. So we appreciate your continued work. There are openings everywhere, um, and, and public works, engineering, everybody has been working so, finance, H R. Huge shout out to Melissa, who's been managing all of these new hires. The city manager search, running downstairs to put on interim finance director hat. You know, once we start listing, there are so many things, planning, code enforcement, just thank you to everybody, recreation, that's been working so hard, uh, to make Oxford, despite our bumps and our pickups, is still a great place. And thank you, staff, to everything that you do, fire department, um, we really appreciate it. Mr. Harold, taking phone calls, reading emails when you're not here.
So that's fine.
And colleagues for your attention to all the issues. And I would remind anybody that is interested in the, um, ARPA session, it's at Vance Granville Community College, uh, the conference room, I think in building one, at ten thirty on Thursday. And if you call tomorrow, you can still get a spot to put in. And as I said, the woman presenting there will be, is the one who wrote the blog for the school of government, Ms. Millenzo, I think is her name. So anyway, uh, with that, we would, uh, like to, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. I don't think I have the general statute.
Can we do a, uh, general restroom break prior to, uh, going into closed?
Yes, we can do that. So let's, so let's take a pause. And all we will do, while we pause, then when we come back in, we'll have a motion to go into closed session. I think it's general statute one sixty-eight, paragraph perhaps six for
Continuation from last thirty-six.
Yes, to continue, it's one forty-three. Uh, one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A six, continue the discussion on the city manager search.
Holy cow, we lived there, weren't we? Or I did. I knew you were.
I think that was the Friday of this year.
Oh, please, if you're done with it. That way, I, they're cheap, I, I don't even have to buy them. Yeah, I swear, I'll do better next year. Something in corruption, I guess, I just can't.
Mayor, uh, you can give my smores to, uh, Mr. Bridges.
Okay, we'll make him a little care package.
I will be taking my wife to start physical therapy.
Okay. Oh yeah. She will definitely need you.
And this is Thursday at twelve thirty?
Yes.
My hair
Well, it's like a, I think it's a floating thing, so you can show up.
Twelve thirty to one thirty.
Oh, okay, maybe I'll be a good day.
So you, you can have mine.
Well, I can't eat the chocolate anyway. Where's Tina? Where's Tina? Tina?
Do you need to wait until we're going, until they hear the motion?
Watch this, it'll be in minutes.
And I think I can read it aloud.
What are you gonna have for us, for people who are allergic to chocolate?
Can you eat it without the chocolate?
Yeah. I just have, uh, mors and not smores. I have a morse.
We can get it when y'all want.
Really?
Yeah, have her get it. Mark off my distance.
I just, I just told him I will be taking my wife to start physical therapy.